I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Tuesday, August 12th, 2014. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, equal and just for all.
The consent agenda. Can everybody hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Roderick.
Present.
Counselor DiMediris.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
All counselors are present.
The consent agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular council meeting, July 28th, 2014.
I'm sorry, Counselor Ruder is not here yet.
Approval of the executive session minutes of July 28th, 2014. Approval of special council meeting, July 21st, 2014. Approval of executive session meetings, July 14th, 2014. Receipt of minutes of the following boards and commissions. Arts Councils, Tiverton Prevention Coalition, Conservation Commission, too. Correspondence received in file, tax assessors approval and abatements. Kate Meeshowd, administrative officer, distribution of July activities report. Town Administrator, distributions of reports on overtime, police, fire, and DPW. Town Administrator, distribution of department monthly reports for July. Any items to be removed.
I'd like to remove CA 6.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to remove CA 7 as well.
And I'm also removing number 7, just in case it's not the same issue that I wanted to raise.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on CA 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
So moved.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. DiMediris.
CA 6 is the Town Administration Distribution Report on Overtime, Police, Fire, and DPW. On the only, I'll make this very brief, the fire department, I would like a number attached to the overtime hours. So the overtime hours are 2,097, I would like a dollar amount, please. And I would also like the overtime for the fire marshals to be counted, too. I know that's a separate line item, but I'd like to see how much we're spending so far this year. The police chief and the DPW, Steve, I would like to thank you because you did mention the dollar amounts, and that's a better way for us to keep track of the overtime.
Mr. Administrator, you will look at that information for us.
Yes, sir.
I will entertain a motion on CA 6.
I make a motion to accept CA 6.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor. Okay, CA 7, Mr. Gerlach.
Yeah, this is really quick, and I think we might want to try to put something on the agenda for our next meeting, but I'm very interested in what our options might be for resolving the issue of a missing or out-of-commissioned senior bus. Seems to be something that's gone on for a while now, and I'm wondering if we can, I'll submit the request for the next meeting, but I'm wondering if we can try to get a little creative here and see what we might be able to do to help remedy that.
Mr. Lambert.
My issue related to the item under tax collector, and specifically, it's indicated here, unfortunately, the pages aren't numbered, but it's indicated under the tax collector, page 2, that the office is now processing payments of taxpayers that were not able to get remit payments within the allotted time period. That is, some of the tax bills went out late. Below is the list of accounts that were paid late due to the bill's short turnaround time. Most of these accounts have mailing addresses in states other than Rhode Island, which may explain the delay. My question was, and it's not really clear to me, were these penalties actually paid? I guess that was, that's my first question. And my second question is, is there some way of refunding these penalties? They amount to something approaching $1,000. It's not huge money for the tax collector. But, for example, Narragansett Electric paid $643.21 under a penalty. I can assume that Narragansett Electric normally pays their bills in a timely fashion. So the question I had, I don't know whether it can be answered tonight, is, one, were all of these penalties paid? And, number two, what, if anything, and this may be addressed to Mr. Tights in part, as well as our tax collector, what, if anything, can we do if these penalties have been paid as far as remitting the payments? In some cases, it might only be 20 or 30 or 40 dollars, but they should never have paid it.
Mr. Tights.
Yes, Mr. President, and since we have this table here where we can't see one another, I would ask the President if, when motions are made, if you'd repeat who made and seconded the motion, because the clerk can't see down there. In response to Counselor Lambert's question, these were paid. The tax collector has no authority to waive any late payments. This was talked about at a previous meeting. But there are two things. I think goal one is to have Vision refund the money from their contract, since it was their mistake. Option two is to have the council abated. It would have to come on a separate agenda as an abatement from the council, which would then be accredited to these people's bills for the next quarter.
And can I assume, then, you're working, then, with the tax collector and working on both of these options at this point?
Mr. Town Administrator.
I'm sorry. Mr. Town Administrator, are you working with the tax collector at this point on both of those options? I'd like to make sure that these people are getting their money back.
The short answer is yes.
Okay. That's the only assurance I need. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Wojcik, if at any meeting, if you could, give us an update on that. Okay, I will entertain a motion on CA 7.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Lambert.
Second.
A second by Ms. DiMediris. All those in favor, motion carries. Open public forum, Barbara Pelletier, celebration of International Dog Day on August 26th at Tiverton Town Hall, sponsored by Placing Paws.
Hi, good evening. My name is Barbara Pelletier. I am here because I think a little celebration makes everyone feel good, and we all love our pets. So there is this International Dog Day on August 26th, which is a very simple thing to do, is to just celebrate having a dog. And if you notice, you received today sort of an agenda of what things can happen, like dogs can stop by for biscuits, we can have a raffle, you can have your town, your dog's picture taken. If you're a tourist, they might want a memory of a dog in Tiverton in front of the seal. One always has to think about tourism. And a small contest, like a long tail, who has the longest tail, who has the shortest tail. It's just a cute thing. And the other thing that we might do is, and I think you've received some information about this yellow, the Yellow Kerchief Project, the Yellow Ribbon Project, where you, if you have a dog that doesn't like to be approached by strangers, not a dog that bites necessarily, but it just gives the approaching person a little heads up, and if you have children, you just warn them a little bit, be more cautious. And so if you want one for free, you're welcome to have one. So I am asking you to please get, have permission to have it at Town Hall and have a few little, you know, for a few of these events, or all of these events, they're not going to be that. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pelletier.
Okay. May I maybe assume that we can have it?
I'm going to perform a motion to proclaim August 26th, 2014, Tiverton August Dog Day.
Great, thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. DiMediris. Second by Mr. Pelletier. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you again, Mrs. Pelletier. Public hearings and public presentations, advertised public hearing, proposed ordinance, amendment to Chapter 8, shooting ranges, shooting galleries. Original proposed ordinance revised by town solicitor. Proposed ordinance redlined, revised by town solicitor. Proposed ordinance clean copy. Materials provided by Mr. Randy LeBeau. Materials provided by Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. Attorney Reagan, letters dated August 6th and July 21st, 2014. TRGC letter dated July 28th. Spreadsheets and correspondence received. Before we begin the hearing, I'm going to ask that, once it's open, that you come up orderly to the mic. Please do not speak from the gallery. If there's too many outbursts and whatnot from the gallery, I will close the hearing. I want everybody to be heard. This is not a shouting match. This is for us to gather information. If something has been said that you were going to say, please don't come up and say the same thing. And the other thing is, I'm going to limit everyone to four minutes. You can tell there's a lot of people here. I'm not sure if everyone's going to speak, but I want everybody at least to have an opportunity, so then we will begin. So anyone from the public who wishes to speak, the mic is now open. When you get up here, identify yourself and your address.
Mr. President, may I?
How you doing?
Excuse me, yes, yes, Mr. Tights. Make some introductory remarks, given the various drafts.
Yes, Mr. Tights is going to make some introductory remarks.
Members of the council, you have a couple of documents here. You have the first draft, which was provided as required for the ordinance, advertising requirements, and then you have two changes to that. You have one, which is a redline version, which the council has it actually in red, but the public has it. It's been posted on the website. It shows new sections are underlined, and sections that are removed are struck out. And then there's finally a clean section. So I think first and foremost, people should make sure they're referring to the right ordinance. The one that was originally advertised six weeks ago is not what's before you tonight. You want to be looking at something that has D5, either clean or redline, but down at the very end where it has a little tag to it, it would say D5. And I want to note that the major changes at this point are to remove the outdoor shooting ranges from the ordinance at this time. There's section, there's Division 2 for requirements for indoor shooting ranges. Section 3 requirements for outdoor shooting ranges is reserved. This is clearly something that's going to require some more time. I did meet with representatives of the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club and their attorney and discussed their situation. I offered to meet with Mr. LeBeau and his attorney. I did not hear back. But I am concerned that the outdoor shooting ranges, particularly where we have a pre-existing nonconforming use as to zoning, that needs some more time and work. So that has been removed. So this would apply only to indoor shooting ranges at this time.
Andy, yeah, go ahead.
There are other couple of key changes that were made, including, basically, for an indoor range, removing a lot of those buffer distances that were in there, since the idea is that they don't, the indoor, the building prevents the bullets from leaving the building. So those were removed. The insurance requirements were lessened from 3 million to 2 million, without a requirement to have the town named as an additional insured. I was informed that that was somewhat impossible to obtain, and I think that's reasonable. 2 million's a reasonable amount that's obtainable. Tried to deal with the background check. Seemed for an organization with many members, hundreds of members, are not doing a background check of everybody in there, only the particular, the officers, if it's a nonprofit organization or association, just as we would do if we're having a liquor license or having a club or a nonprofit club is holding a liquor license, something like that. So those are really the key, big changes at the moment. I know there are other issues that people may have, and people may want more or less and so forth, but that's, I just want to make sure everybody is talking about the same animal. Counselor DiMediris, did you?
My only question was, the shooting range, under definitions, the shooting range facility, would that only refer to indoor? It doesn't specify indoor or outdoor.
Well, it could. I mean, the outdoor one is specifically reserved. It could, it could, I would have no problem just saying indoor at this point in time, and then we can deal with that when we would make it clear that it's only indoor. And my understanding, by the way, is that at least the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club would be able to meet all of these standards currently, even though they're provided with a total of five months before they have to obtain a license, but they would be able to meet the standards for the indoor one.
Well, I was just wondering, because you did say that this was going to only refer to indoor, and it doesn't specify that when you're looking at the...
That'd be fine, if you wanted to just change the, change the definition, add the word indoor to the, to the definition.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now open the hearing.
Good evening. Randy LeBeau from Secana River Outfitters, 404 Main Road. And I just want to say that everything that's going on in here tonight shouldn't be happening. I had zoning. I had all, everything was in order from the town, from all the officials of the town, and then Andy Tights left out to you guys that the Licensing Authority, 11-47-2, is the Tiverton Chief of Police, or the chief of any town is the licensing authority. You guys were left in the dark about that, and now here we are with this. You put a burden on me. You put a burden on my business. I walk around this town now, and I hear bad things said about me all the time. Everything that he has caused because he did not tell you exactly what was going on.
Mr. LeBeau, this isn't about you tonight.
No, it's not. But it's about me right now, because now it is about me. And that's what it turned into.
Mr. LeBeau, as I said in the beginning, this is regarding the ordinance.
Yes, but the ordinance...
If it hasn't got anything to do, if you want to attack, there will be no personal attacks here tonight. I'm telling you right now.
Okay, well, why weren't you guys notified that the Tiverton Chief of Police is the licensing authority? I just, can somebody answer that question?
Well, let's, let's calm down for a second.
And all of this here, the burden on the town, is because you weren't told that. I'm done. I'm done.
No. How we saw, how we...
Enough! I told you there will be no outbursts, or I will clear this auditorium.
Mr. President, Mr. President, what I want to say is, the way we solve problems and the way we come to a resolution of an issue is not by, you know, it's by talking through issues. And what we have to do is understand, we all need to be on the same page. And I think we have a fundamental difference of opinion as to what that statute states. And I don't think it's appropriate for anybody that isn't on this council to tell this council what we do or don't know. Only we can tell you what's been provided us, or what we understand, or what we don't understand. You know, that's all I want to say. I think we have a fundamental difference of opinion as to what that says. And it references the police chief or any other, what's the language, Andy? Any other body constituted by blah, blah, blah. You know what I mean?
Well, Mr. President, I would add to that, and I think this is an indication that we have to approach an issue like this rationally. All due respect, Randy, you provided me with a copy of the statute. It took all of 10 seconds to realize, with all due respect, Randy, you misquoted the statute. The statute specifically provides that the licensing authority, as defined, includes any other person or duly authorized, or duly authorized by the city or town charter or by state law. Our charter specifically authorizes the town council to issue a license under Section The point I'm making, Andy, it doesn't help your cause to suggest we're misreading things, we're not reading things, we're not doing our homework, we're doing the best we can under trying circumstances, and that's how, hopefully, this whole meeting is going to proceed. Giving everybody their due respect.
My name is Joe Souza, 49 Hancock Street. I'd also like to mention that I served six years on the Tiverton Zoning Board. I've had a pretty good understanding how our ordinances, zoning work, how business comes to town and is usually issued a permit. I have to say, after reading through the ordinance, I guess it's pretty much, you know, it's palatable. I think business could open under it. But the previous speaker to the microphone was trying to make a point, and I see that as well, in that this man should have been issued a building permit, based on what I've seen going on in town in our ordinances. And I think that's where the stinkers came in, that when he came to Town Hall to get a permit, it should have been issued. There are other ranges in town that built, came to Town Hall, drew a permit, and built the facility. The town council said boo. The town solicitor said boo. The facility was built. It's in existence now. There are also a private range right below Stone Bridge, or just off to the side, that ran there for years and was never regulated or anything. It was just a private range that was run there. It wasn't until recent that I've seen that a businessman come to town, wanted to build a building, was told, oh, we have to create an ordinance before we can give you a permit, calling it a shooting gallery and not a shooting range. A shooting gallery, which I've been to up in New Hampshire in different amusement parks, where you're shooting with a pop gun, or a BB gun, or an air rifle, knocking down targets that fall over, or shoot the bear, and he goes up and screams, whatever, as a gallery. As I spoke earlier in a different meeting, I talked about the regulations required for quarries. It's the same way for shooting range. The bulk of the regulations come from state and federal regulation. The town is really not needed to be involved, except for maybe operational hours, which we regulate all businesses, as far as hours, depending on what district they're in. I think he'll be able to build with this ordinance, and I think that he'll have to live with it, but I think there was some stink about him not being able to get the permit and build already.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask the audience again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm Attorney Peter Regan here tonight, representing the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, which, as you know, is a nonprofit organization, has been operating in Tiverton since 1933. Majority of its members are Tiverton residents and families. Operates one of the premier sportsmen's clubs in New England, right up the road here on 70 acres off of Fish Road. And while the impetus for this proposed ordinance was Mr. LeBeau's proposal for a new indoor shooting range, as opposed to the operation of the Rod and Gun Club, the ordinance has potential to really devastate the club and its operation. So we're appreciative of the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to correspond with the council over the last couple of weeks, also the opportunity to meet with Mr. Tights, review the ordinance with him, to be able to make some suggestions as to its improvement. And I think, you know, looking at the current draft of the ordinance, I would say it is a great improvement over the original draft, particularly in that it is now limited to indoor ranges, which I believe brings it more in line with current state law. And while I think it still needs some tweaks, it's certainly a step in the right direction. But in considering this ordinance, I think the council, once again, needs to really focus on the reason why we're having this conversation in the first place, which is the proposal by Mr. LeBeau to build a new shooting gallery. And just frankly, we're a very different animal than what he is proposing. First and foremost, we're a nonprofit, family-centered organization. We are not a commercial business. We've been operating for 81 years in Tiverton with an impeccable safety record. We're operating on over 70 acres in a relatively isolated area, certainly compared to the pending proposal. And I think also, more importantly, from a zoning standpoint, we're legal nonconforming use, so there is already significant limitations on what the Rod and Gun Club can do and where we can do it. So for that reason, frankly, whatever need the council may believe it has to regulate this pending proposal, or any future gun club or shooting range that may be built in the town, those reasons don't apply to the Rod and Gun Club. And for that reason, we have suggested that lawfully pre-existing facilities such as the Rod and Gun Club be exempted from the ordinance, provided that they meet certain minimum requirements. And I provided a copy of a proposed exemption to the council in my letter last week. The only addition to that proposal, if the council would consider it, would be to add a requirement that the range also be operated by a nonprofit institution, such as the Rod and Gun Club. Now, I want the council to be aware, I'm not suggesting that we operate without rules. Frankly, we currently operate with a lot more rules than are being proposed. This is the proposed ordinance. This is the current operating rules, safety guidelines, environmental protocols that the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club operates under, and that's in addition to federal and state firearms and environmental regulations that we need to comply with. So we are already well-regulated, and any of you that have been out to the Rod and Gun Club know that it is not part of this problem, to the extent that there is one. The other thing that you need to consider is, in terms of the outdoor provisions of this draft ordinance, if you were to adopt those, they would apply only to the Rod and Gun Club, because outdoor ranges are prohibited under your zoning ordinance. And if anyone were to operate in a legal outdoor range, you already have an enforcement mechanism. You can simply prosecute them for a zoning violation under the zoning ordinance. So, and they would think it would be frankly inconsistent to adopt a regulatory scheme for something that is otherwise a prohibited use in the town. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak with the council, to speak with the solicitor. We appreciate the opportunity tonight, but I think you have to take a look at why we're here, what the motivation is for this ordinance. I think you'll see that it does not apply to the Rod and Gun Club. We've been here for 81 years. We plan to be here for another 81 years at least, and as you can see from many of the folks that are here tonight, it is, we're not a commercial business. This is a family-centered, nonprofit organization, and we'd ask that you give very, very serious consideration to including the provision that we have proposed in this ordinance. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Regan, I would be particularly interested in, you know, knowing that the newest draft has made what appears to be substantial progress. You mentioned that there could still be quote-unquote "tweaks." Aside from what you have provided here, are there any other specific tweaks that you would like to call out at this time?
Well, I mean, certainly with regard to the Rod and Gun Club, the inclusion of the exemption provision is first and foremost our main concern. With regard to the ordinance itself, I believe Councilwoman DiMediris indicated that, I think, the current draft, while the intent was to limit it to indoor ranges, the definitions can be read to include outdoor facilities. So even though there's no design requirement or minimum standards for an outdoor facility in the current draft, you can still read it as being applicable to an outdoor facility and still requiring licensing for an outdoor facility. So I think, once again, narrowing that definition to make it clear that you're only talking about indoor facilities would be an important step.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just, I just wanted some clarification. These, this exemption section that you've proposed or provided us relates to outdoor facilities, but the Rod and Gun Club, I remember reading somewhere that you also have an indoor facility that you just recently renovated, or...
It actually would relate to either indoor or outdoor facilities. At the time that it was drafted, when I sent it to the council, I had not seen the draft of the ordinance which Mr. Tights then sent me that limited it to indoor facilities. So what we're proposing is an exemption for lawfully pre-existing shooting ranges, provided that they meet those minimum requirements that are set forth in that proposal. So that would apply to both indoor and outdoor. Obviously, the provisions of the ordinance... indoor and outdoor. Obviously, the provisions of the ordinance that were most problematic in the original draft were those with regard to the outdoor ranges.
So I just have a follow-up question, and maybe Andy or Matt can answer. It strikes me as, it strikes me as a little redundant to have requirements for distance and attractive land not more than 10 acres, 150 feet from a residence, if the only existing facility already exceeds those, or doesn't qual-, I mean, it's, you know, do you know what I mean? There is not another facility in town that I don't know about, correct?
And also, our zoning doesn't allow shooting, any outdoor facility?
I'm saying, we're talking about pre-existing non-conforming uses, but...
No, I don't know of any other pre-existing non-conforming use. And that's why I was suggesting removing the outdoor one at this time, because the original draft, the setbacks in the outdoor one would have rendered this use impossible. I'm not necessarily, at this point, I don't know whether we should have, you know, no setbacks or buffers as far as neighboring properties, or, and I think that needs more time. And to come back, I'm not saying that, I still believe that the town has the authority to regulate outdoor shooting ranges, and I think we should. I just don't think we're ready to do it at this time. I have learned that there's more information that I certainly need to know about how shooting ranges are run, and this one, before I want to write the ordinance for the outdoor ranges. It's clearly a problem, but it's not an urgent problem that I think we can address at this point, which is why I tried to split it.
Yeah. Help me understand why a, you know, distance requirements and things like that would be necessary for a pre-existing non-conforming use that would, by definition, not be allowed to expand without a special use permit? Or am I...
Well, because, right. Well, this comes down to the fact that this is a regulation, and in fact, it is similar to the idea of the quarries. It may be pre-existing non-conforming uses as to zoning, but you still have some regulatory power in the public health and safety. So, they're not, instead of zoning, they're in addition to it. And I'm not sure whether you would, in fact, have any distances and so forth, whether they'd be required or not. But I'm not sure, at this point, one way or the other. I am sure that they're not needed for the indoor one. I'm comfortable not having them for the indoor one. I'd like to examine it for the outdoor one. I was convinced by Mr. Regan and his client that the design of shooting galleries and buffers, even outdoor ones, that he referred to the fact that it's not a blue-sky range, which people in the audience know. I didn't know what it was until explained. But certainly changes the aspect of it. But I, that's more than could have been done in the week and a half since our meeting to amend it. So I thought we would just deal with the immediate problem, which is, Mr. LeBeau has requested, tried to start a business. The council directed me to prepare the ordinance. I prepared the ordinance. And I think that's really the impetus.
But I think, this is my last comment, and I'll turn the floor over, that we have also the second layer of the Rod and Gun Club having an indoor facility. And so I'm trying to understand how this would be...
Well, I think it would be just as discriminatory to one as the other, to say, "Okay, we're going to license shooting, indoor shooting ranges, but only new ones, not old ones," because it's a public health and licensing thing. And actually, if you read the statutes, both Title IV and Title XI, basically says, you know, "It's a crime to be running the shooting gallery or shooting range." And the terms changed over time. It's over 100 years, shooting range, shooting gallery. But they've been used interchangeably by the legislature throughout. So, the law on its face says, "It's a crime to be operating it without a license." So, I don't think it's appropriate to exempt them from it.
Right. So in our new draft, or this new draft that's being proposed, that you've reviewed, the requirements that would be placed on the indoor facility at the Rod and Gun Club, you didn't speak specifically to those, but are those, have you reviewed them, and have you assessed their impact and reasonableness?
I've reviewed them. As I said before, they're an improvement over what was there previously. I did want to just respond to the statement with regard to an exemption being discriminatory. I think that there's a distinct difference between an organization that has operated for 81 years, that has built and maintained facilities, that has in the last few years actually spent hundreds of thousands of dollars updating and maintaining those facilities. There's a distinct difference between that and someone who's coming into town and is building facility from scratch, and who's then presented with a set of regulations that they need to go ahead and conform with. So, under the circumstances, once again, if you adopt outdoor provisions, they apply only to the Rod and Gun Club, because there's no other outdoor ranges, and they're prohibited. With regard to indoor ranges, I think, once again, we're a very different animal. We're a nonprofit. We're not a commercial business. We're in a different, completely different type of area than Mr. LeBeau's facility's going to be included in. And I believe that the exemption, under all those circumstances, is absolutely appropriate. It's absolutely legal. And the council has, certainly has the authority to go ahead and include that in the ordinance. And we'd ask that you do that.
Mr. Regan, obviously, I thank you for the time that you've spent working with Mr. Tights. And I'm sure that is something that we're going to look at further regarding outdoor ranges. And I know the Rod and Gun Club, as you say, has been in existence for 81 years, and it's been a big part of this town. So, you know, we understand that. And I want everybody to realize that we're not trying to prohibit any businesses or activity. But when public safety is involved, we have to at least understand what the business is, and how it operates, and whether or not there should be some guidelines and rules and regulations. And so that's basically what this ordinance is about.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Regan. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to speak. I'm Rodney Santos. I'm actually from Exeter, Rhode Island. I'm not from Tiverton, obviously. But as you can see here, there are many concerned citizens from the firearm community that are very interested in what your ordinance may or may not do. So I'd like to afford you a different point of perspective that what this ordinance may do will affect many other towns in the other 45 or so firearm ranges. Also like to bring to light that these firearm ranges, as you've heard, they enable law enforcement and the police to train. We have youth leagues. We have safety programs. And the more regulations that you put upon, in addition to, you know, what you've already seen here, for safety, puts a big burden on these firearm ranges. And there are long waiting lists of three, four, five years for the community to join these firearm ranges. Hundreds of people are trying to join. So they're already burdened. Realize that you have to have your safety regulations, and you're thinking about it in a smart way. And some of these changes that you've discussed tonight seem to be going in the right direction, not overly restrictive, but allowing these firearm ranges to exist and continue in their business. Beyond that, you know, we have educational programs and so forth and so on. So the more costs and restrictions that you put, that may or may not be necessary, especially not necessary with respect to safety, is going to put a burden on all these other firearm ranges, because other towns will watch what you're doing, obviously by the turnout that you see here today. We'd like to just have you consider that, as you've made those amendments in the right direction to, you know, allow the legacy, Tiverton Rod and Gun Club continue in its fashion. Just be mindful that the changes and ordinances that you do now or in the future in Tiverton will obviously affect all of us as a community, the responsible firearm community. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Does Exeter have a shooting range?
We do. We have the South County Rod and Gun Club. We have the Warwick Sportsman's Association, and I'm a member of both of those. And I've been to Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, and I talked to the building official in the town of Tiverton here, Red Bishop, and did a little bit of research. And you said, his opinions today, when I spoke to him, were, "The Tiverton Rod and Gun Club is very safe, fully compliant, meets all building codes, is very well organized, and he's happy to announce that they've met the American Disabilities Act." And just three months ago, he was there doing a thorough investigation on this indoor pistol range, and was impressed by it meeting its building codes. And with over his 20 years of building official experience and 40 years in carpentry, I took that to be a very solid opinion of the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club and their behavior. Brought him to some other ranges, and he said that, you know, "We're all moving in the right direction with this legislation that we've been handed down for firearms and our ranges with the NRA Safety Book. You know, we have a lot, as you've seen here tonight, by that book, that we're very compliant." And just want you to keep that in mind. And yes, a lot of towns do have similar ranges. Not every town, like Jamestown or other towns, but there are. And those ranges are very busy now. Like I said, there are 100 and something people on the waiting list in some of these clubs, a couple hundred. So, it takes some time. So, just want you to keep that in mind when you're enacting legislative ordinance.
Mr. Santos, does Exeter have an ordinance or any licensing requirements for your gun range?
Just by the state law that's already in place now, you know, the town can, you know, as you've discussed here with your lawyer and the attorneys, do that. But they have not, you know, licensed these ranges. These ranges have been there for 100 and something years. You know, just, it's odd that, you know, all of a sudden, licensing now has come to light. You know, why? Is it because somebody had an issue? Is it because the range is uncompliant? Or is it because somebody's public opinion changed? I don't know. You have to answer it for yourself. Is it really required? So, you should probably think about that, too. Why now, all of a sudden, after 81 years, serving the community? You know, these ranges serve the community. They're safe. They're done very mindfully with compliance of EPA laws and the NRA regulation range rules. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Reeves, President of Tiverton Rod and Gun. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, council, for this opportunity to speak. I ask for your careful consideration of this ordinance, as it applies to the operation of the gun club. I'm not here to refute the specific details of the ordinance, rather, just rather to give a picture of what Tiverton Rod and Gun Club is. As I prepared my testimony, I was often reminded of the current town slogan, "Looking to the Future and Honoring the Past." The U.S. Supreme Court established Tiverton's borders as we know them today in the year 1862. That means Tiverton Rod and Gun Club has been a member of this community for more than half of Tiverton's 152-year existence. Founded in '33, we have witnessed decades of historical events, including the election of 14 U.S. presidents, 12 U.S. wars and conflicts, John Glenn orbiting the earth, and even Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech. With an impeccable safety record, Tiverton Rod and Gun has supported veterans, blue-collar workers, white-collar workers, fathers, grandfathers, active-duty military, children, for the last 81 years. Our organization reinforces the local economy, conservation efforts, and also fish and wildlife goals of the Rhode Island D E M. Accountability, safety, education, and fun are the four pillars that define our organization, and we're very serious about them. We've implemented several town-approved facility changes in order to solidify our commitment to the community and to the town. Rhode Island is home to more than 30 sportsman's clubs, of which none are licensed. Licensing of our organization is not necessary, as proven by the Middletown case in 2003. In 2003, the Middletown Town Council reviewed a licensing issue, and the town council voted it down. And there are no other sportsman's clubs in Rhode Island that are licensed currently. So it is not a hard-fast requirement. In conclusion, I have one simple request. Please honor our past by protecting our future. Thank you very much.
Counsel President Roddick, Madam Vice President, members of the council...
I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Excuse me. I'm sorry, we missed your name and everything.
My name is Jim Terrio. I'm an owner-member of the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. I'm also a life member of the National Rifle Association, as well as being a member of the National Shooting Sports Foundation. I'd like to comment on what the nonprofit Tiverton Rod and Gun Club means to the local economy, something that's often lost. At the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, the safe practice of shooting sports proceeds on a daily basis, and the club provides a proven environment for the participation in shooting sports in general, and a practice facility for Newport County Police Departments. The National Shooting Sports Foundation, in its role of supporting shooting sports throughout the United States, tracks and publishes the annual impact to local economies from shooting sports, and extends it through other sectors impacted by association in the local economy. The foundation tracks and publishes a state-by-state report, and for the last year that these figures are available and complete, 2011, the following is reported for the state of Rhode Island. Retail sales, $45,369,482. Total multiplier effect, this is the famous dollar bouncing within your communities, $77,588,173. 709 total jobs. Salaries and wages, $27,886.74. GDP contribution, $43,699.45. And here, respectively, your ears will perk up. State and local taxes, $5,786,879. Federal tax revenue, of which the town also receives a portion, $6,324,586. These numbers are strictly for the state of Rhode Island. The Tiverton Rod and Gun Club is the largest club of its kind in the state of Rhode Island, and its economic impact is significant. I respectfully ask that you exempt the club from any proposed licensing, and allow the club to continue as it has for 81 years. Thank you.
Hi, council members. My name is Mike Puyana, and I live in Boreal, Rhode Island. And for, with all due respect for people who might want me to butt out of Tiverton business, I'd just like to point out that as a member of the National Rifle Association, as a responsible, law-abiding, and very much enjoying firearms owner, and as a member of the Sales Hill Rod and Gun Club, one thing that we've all learned as firearms owners who are involved with these types of shooting organizations is there is a very high level and intensive level of self-regulation that goes on with these things. All of these clubs tend to have very strict range safety rules, very strict policies on how shooting activities are handled. And it almost seems like extra ordinances and regulations seem to be a bit of a solution looking for a problem. The average firearm owner is somebody who builds the homes and businesses that we work in, fixes our cars, fixes our teeth, provides us with legal services, serves us dinner, paves our roads, and even sits on our town councils. We are everybody. And I would simply like to, not that you need reminding of it, but simply point out that, like most shooting clubs around the country, and especially in this state, there is no problem with safety. There is no problem with them being, quote unquote, "regulated," because we do an outstanding job of it ourselves. As we all know, a responsible, law-abiding society is a safe society. It makes the job of our law enforcement and public safety professionals safer and easier. It makes our community safer, and it makes for a better quality of life for all of us. So I would urge that, before any type of additional ordinance is going to be passed, that we look at the main reason for it and ask ourselves, "Is it absolutely necessary? Have we done everything that we need to without requiring this?" And I think in virtually all cases, and I can tell you absolutely, given what I've heard with the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, they don't need any more assistance to run their operation with the impeccable safety record that they've already gotten. The results speak for themselves. And I would urge you all just to keep that in mind and figure that into your decisions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Raymond. I'm a resident of Cumberland, Rhode Island. I'm a member of the Cumberland Beagle Club. And I'm here for two reasons tonight. One, to show support for the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, and number two, to take advantage of the wonderful seafood at Evelyn's. Us up north don't have any place like it, so when in Tiverton, we must stop. I'm not going to repeat anything anybody else has said. You know your burden of responsibility. I'm sure you're going to check your policies, procedures. I do wish that you do take extreme consideration in what you do, and I'm sure you're knowledgeable of what of an impact it may have elsewhere in the state and possibly elsewhere in the nation. Thank you, and good night.
Good evening. My name is Mike O'Neill. I am the Vice President of Second Amendment Coalition. We are the NRA state affiliate for the state of Rhode Island. I'm also a board member of Highland Rod and Gun Club out of Foster, Rhode Island. I am also a Warwick, Rhode Island resident. A gentleman earlier mentioned about the money that is brought into the state of Rhode Island. I would like to expand on that a little bit. Pittman Robinson Act was enacted in nineteen thirty-seven, I believe, by President Roosevelt. And what that does is that, at the time, your deer and other animals were being extinct, so this was kind of like to provide, to bring up the population. What that does for the state of Rhode Island is when you buy a firearm from the manufacturer, they're charged a tax. It goes to the Secretary of Interior. If it's eight-hundred dollars, eighty-eight dollars will go to Secretary of Interior. That money comes to the state of Rhode Island. We are the leading industry in the state of Rhode Island bringing money into the state. Two-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars for two thousand and thirteen. Now, if Tiverton had a boat ramp, we'll say that needs to get repaired. If you give D E M. the right of way, they will fix the boat ramp out of that money. So that's one, just one minor aspect of how much money is brought into the state by the firearms community. Also, I'd like to share with you on hunting licenses. If it's sixty-five dollars for a multi-license, we get two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars from the federal government. So with that, it's, you have also, if somebody comes into Tiverton to hunt, they stop for gas. They stop at your restaurants. They stop at your firearm stores. They buy ammunition. That's more money that comes back to the state of Rhode Island. Plus, if they buy a firearm in Tiverton, you'll also get the tax from that also. Now, on part of this proposal, it also states that outside shooting is from dawn till dusk. Well, a lot of firearm ranges will have trap shooting, which is skeet or trap. It's a clay that is shot out by a machine, and will have nightlights. And that's more people coming into your city and town because they travel from one facility to another. So you could go till like nine o'clock at night, and your restaurants, and again, your gas stations are used while people come in town. So I'd just like to, there's really a lot more detail that has to go into this proposal as far as the impact on the economy for the state of Rhode Island, also Tiverton. So I would like you to really think about that. And I, I just look at this proposal, and I look at it as, when you want to curb gun violence, like say in Providence, people are putting in laws that will go against the firearm owner, not against the criminal. And to me, I just, all due respect, I think this is way excessive than what is needed for Tiverton and the other five gun clubs in the community to operate, since everybody, you know, there is no real issue in Tiverton. So I really don't understand why this ordinance has really expanded that much. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, in the newest draft, the dusk requirements for outdoor shooting are eliminated, because this just now is referring to indoor shooting ranges only. So if that helps you at all.
All right, great. Thank you.
I'd also just like to do a little public service announcement. This is an auditorium, and it's shaped a certain way so that everybody in the back can hear people up here. But it works the other way, too. So everything that people standing in the doorways are saying, we can hear, or at least I can. So if you do want to talk to somebody, just step out into the hallway, please. Thank you very much.
Somewhat bowled over. I am William Bullard, Chief Petty Officer, United States Navy, retired.
Thank you for your service.
I'm not here to talk about the economic impact. I'm basically here to talk about what it means to me, this Rod and Gun Club. Okay? In nineteen ninety-one, I distinguished twice shooting for the all-Navy team. I couldn't have done that. If I hadn't been here every weekend, that I did not have duty, I couldn't have done it. It was just, just impossible. Some men go all their lives in competitive shooting and never see a medal. Never. I did it twice in one year. Couldn't have done it had it not been for Tiverton. Time goes by. My competitive shooting falls by the wayside because Uncle Sam says, "Go back to sea." I retire. I go back into competitive shooting. I live at a different level than other riflemen. I've built two competitive rifles. Last year, Christmas time, down in Houston, Texas, I certified long range with a rifle that I built. I couldn't have done that again had I not been at this Rod and Gun Club, working day in, day out, freezing, sweating, and everything else it took to achieve that. I can shoot six-hundred to a thousand yards and hit what I see as a sport. I couldn't have done that had I not been here. And that's what this Rod and Gun Club means to me. And I'm sure on many different levels, the same thing to a lot of these men and women here. They live at a different level. I live at a different level. But it means the same thing to us, a chance to realize personal excellence. Benjamin Disraeli once said, "If change is not necessary, it is necessary not to change." Put in Navy talk, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." I ask you, please exempt this Rod and Gun. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm not good at this. I am Marion Kendricks. I've been a resident of Tiverton for seventeen years, and I care very much about it. I don't care about the gun issue. That's not why I want to speak. What I'm talking about for myself is how, not the ordinance, but when I came here, because I read something in the newspaper three weeks, that we were changing an ordinance. My concern here is, how many people is this going to concern? The one developer who's coming to town, is that something you can ask, answer for me? I don't, I'm all for the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club to continue. But why are we making a difference for someone coming to Tiverton to open a business? I know business is very important to town. I've heard people talk about, well, they'll use the facilities here. It'll be open from dawn till nine. How many restaurants in Tiverton are open past nine o'clock? Ten tops? Someone's going to have time to have a meal after that? I don't think so. I moved to this town because it had a rural feel. I live in the southern part of the town. I go up and down Fish Road. We're losing grainery for the seventeen years we've been here. Some people call that progress. I would like some of what Tiverton has been and why I moved to this town to continue. I'm also looking to the future, not just right now. You are stewards, council members, for Tiverton. And I hope we are not making rules for one developer who wants to open a profit business that may only profit him. I don't think that should be your job. And if I have misinformation on what this ordinance is about, I would like to be corrected if, right now.
First of all, thank you. But this particular ordinance is because this is a business that is new to the town.
Right.
And it's something that did not exist. So it has to be looked at totally, how it fits into the community, how it fits into the zoning, does it abut residences, so forth, all those things that we have to take into consideration. And it's not specifically saying that only because of this particular business. This ordinance is because this is something new to town. And if you don't look at and understand what's coming in, and just allow people to open businesses just for the sake of opening businesses, then you don't know what you're going to have. And this is not to be punitive. This is not to penalize anyone. It's to protect not only the developer, but also the town itself. So, and that's why these ordinances are put in place.
It was also to make sure that the residents in the area feel safe. There was a lot of concerns about this being opened, even though it's a commercially zoned area. There is a lot of residents in that area. And a lot of residents were very concerned that it would not be safe. So for me, with this ordinance, it made me feel that there is a safety level there, that people will feel comfortable with it. If there was any problems there, then we don't give them a license the next time. Some kind of regulation. We weren't trying to stop Mr. LeBeau. We were trying to make the area residents feel safe.
May I?
Yes.
I'm not trying to stop a particular person, but the person ahead of me said, "If it isn't broke, don't change." We have not had this kind of business in town before. Why do we need it now? A lot of people have come here from other towns. They're on the gun issue. I don't, that is not my issue. My issue is the future of this town, the character of the town, and how many people are going to move into Tiverton because we have a shooting range here. And I think that should be one of the most important things here. What's going to happen twenty years later? Are we going to become a town of shooting ranges? That's a possibility. There's a lot of open land here. Is that the type of Tiverton that we want? And I just hope you would give the character of the town consideration. And again, I have nothing against Mr. LeBeau. It is more the character of the town and how this will, in my opinion, change the character of the town. Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. President, I just, I just wanted to sort of respond to that by saying a few things that struck me as the one was speaking. There are two distinct issues that surround this particular contemplated use in the town of Tiverton. And the Town Council and the Town Administrator and the, everybody that works in the town, from planning to zoning to enforcement, we have to live within the bounds of the documents and the regulations that exist in front of us. And so there's, the first step in this process would have been the zoning process, and the zoning official in the town of Tiverton, who really is the only person who is qualified, for lack of a better term, by the state of Rhode Island to interpret our zoning code and make an appropriate decision, deemed that this was in that neighborhood zone, which is commercial business, I believe, a legal use. And through that process, the Town Council was put on notice from a discussion we had months prior that there was a Rhode Island state law regarding indoor shooting facilities that we were unaware of before January or February of this year, and to the best of our knowledge, we're not enforcing. And so for me, at least, it's a two-part issue, that this is a legal use as determined by the zoning official. But also, I am put on notice as one of the, for lack of a better terms, lawmakers, keepers, whatevers, of the town, that there is a law in Rhode Island that we are ignoring. And I think if you look at that law, the point of those sorts of laws is to make the rest of the public feel as comfortable as the folks at the Rod and Gun Club and the folks at Secana Outfitters do about the safety and security measures that are in place. And that certainly, we have two constituencies here. We have a constituency of folks who avail themselves of the services of the Rod and Gun Club and Secana Outfitters, and our general gun owner shooters, they use those services. And then there are everybody else who may not know the intricacies and the details of how those operations are run. Those people, we also have a duty to serve and make sure they understand that there is transparency and an appropriate level of oversight on these, on these facilities.
Good evening. My name is Michael Dow. I'm a Tiverton resident. I live at Village Road. Good evening, Mr. President, Ms. Vice President, councilmen, councilwomen. Thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight. I am here tonight because John Means asked me to come. And he asked all of us to come. And I'm going to speak from a different vantage point. For a long time now, we've heard about the erosion in our society of community and how we're bowling alone, and how we spend too much time alone. And what I see in this organization is a group of dedicated people trying to make the community a better place. And I won't even talk about shooting, and I won't talk about the NRA. But what I will talk about is the feeling that I get when I go up to that club, a feeling of membership in something. I hadn't ever picked up a gun before coming to a gun safety class that was put on by this club. And I was so impressed by the professionalism and dedication of the men and women up there that I wanted to become a part of that. And I was relatively new to Tiverton, and I wanted to get to meet people. And when I go to meetings up there, I see people of all walks of life. There's workmen. There's white-collar people. There's service people. I'm a clinician in a hospital, and I work twelve-hour days in a critical care setting. And yet, when I go up to the Rod and Gun Club with a pistol in the beautiful facility that John Means and the officers have set up, and under strict rules of safety, knowing how to handle that gun, I set my mind to that task. It helps me clear my mind. It helps me to relax, to focus. When I'm up there and I see grandfathers and fathers teaching young boys and young girls the art of how to handle something dangerous, the skill of getting along with other people, the responsibility they have to be good citizens as part of a group of people with common allegiance and common fidelity, I think that's very, very valuable to any community. This is a big organization, and John Means has grown that tremendously over the last number of years. And it is with pride that I consider myself a member of this group, although I don't get out there much. I do enjoy it very much when I am able to do that. And I am very proud to be associated with these people who teach lessons that are not taught. We won't find this in a for-profit business. I don't go to a shooting gallery. I go to be a member of a group of people with ideals. They have rules that I must follow. I must be a good citizen. And when there is a call, as there was tonight, to come out and sit in this stuffy auditorium to defend something that we believe in, then it's tonight that I am a citizen of Tiverton. I appreciate your time very much. I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you.
Sure. Good evening.
Hi. My name's Kathy Calabrese, and I live in that neighborhood. And I was very upset that there was no letter sent to let any of the residents know that this was being proposed on that property. I found out by accident. I'm not against guns. I took a class at the Rod and Gun Club a couple of years ago. It was a women's gun safety class. I enjoyed it. I'm opposed to this because I don't think it belongs in a neighborhood. There's two five-year-old children that live about 25 feet from this. It's also where the bus stop is. And that's my concern. There's so much rural area in this town, I don't see why we are putting a gun shop and a shooting range in a neighborhood. It just doesn't make sense to me. And that's all I want to say. Thank you. Thank you for answering me.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Attorney Frank Sikosho. I am the Assistant City Solicitor for the Town of Johnston. I am also the president of the Rhode Island Second Amendment Coalition. For the last couple of years, we've been up to State House, working with the legislators, drafting legislation with regard to firearms legislation. We're also proudly, this year, we were able to sit on the task force, Mental Health Task Force relating to firearms and mental health this year, up at the State House. Taking a look at this particular legislation and the changes you've made to it, it looks good on some of the changes, but it doesn't look like it's done yet. This ordinance that you have in front of you, the changes, do not go far enough in grandfathering or exempting legal, existing, non-conforming uses in the town. So, if there is any help that's needed for the language for the solicitor, I'd be willing to help with the solicitor and with the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club's attorneys. We have a lot of experience in drafting legislation to help exempt or grandfather in these legal, non-conforming uses, so you can feel safe and to make sure that this legislation does what it's supposed to do, and not burden the people that have come here tonight to tell you how great Tiverton Rod and Gun Club is and how it affects them. You should take into account that these people have taken their time to come here tonight to explain that to you. So this legislation, I don't believe, is done yet. Still needs some work, and feel free to contact the Rhode Island Second Amendment Coalition if you guys need any help with this, the solicitor or the attorney for Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dennis Coffey, Secretary of Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. Members of the council, Administrator Wojcik, Solicitor Teetz, and Town Clerk Nancy Mellon. As you all know, our club has had a, Tiverton Rod and Gun Club has a long and sturdy relationship with the town, and has never, and I repeat, never, have had a shooting incident or injury with a firearm. Safety is our first priority, but our club is also much more than a shooting facility. It focuses on education and community involvement. The club offers you, me, and others many other opportunities other than shooting. We support the Rhode Island Blood Bank, the Tiverton Food Pantry, the Boy Scouts getting their merit badges. We have educational initiatives with Brown University, and are starting one with University of Rhode Island. We've hosted the Gathering of Nations in American Indian Pow Wow, as well as numerous Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management seminars on regulations that propose changes to them regarding hunting, archery, and safety. We also host the Newport County Police Departments and their tactical training exercises, which is so important for the continued safety of all citizens. Personally, my son and daughter-in-law are veterans of Operation Iraqi Freedom. He has shot here, as have many veterans. She has been invited to coach the 2016 United States Women's Pistol League for the Olympics. Our club has a grant from the United States Department of Agriculture, Fish and Wildlife Service to conserve roughly 13 acres, approximately 14% of our property area, for the preservation of the almost endangered rabbits. They're not quite on the disc yet, but the New England Cotton Tail is getting very close. We will also, that area will also be for the cultivation of flora and bees. This is true, I'm not making this up. This area will be there for everybody to enjoy, and it also adds to a buffer area for our neighbors. In short, Tiverton has a jewel, Tiverton has a jewel with Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, and there's no other place with such a wide variety of learning opportunities for all our members and the town's citizens. It's a wonderful place that is so much more than just a shooting gallery. It is a joy to work with Tiverton Rod and Gun Club for all members and non-members alike. I respectfully ask that if this proposed ordinance is approved, that Tiverton Rod and Gun Club be fully and expressly exempted from its provisions. I thank you for listening to my words and for your time and patience.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. Thank you, sir.
I just want to talk about what we are actually proposing for the lot in the core of Haskins and Main. It is going to be a double-walled, indoor-range facility where all of our customers will be required to bring their firearms to and from the facility in locked containers. There will be no, if anybody's found in violation of that, they'll be banned from the facility. And it's not just going to be a gun shop and a shooting range, it's going to be a training facility, where when a new gun buyer comes in, we can teach them how to properly use the weapon, how to properly be safe. And that is something that we'll be bringing to the community that is above and beyond what anybody else is currently doing. And we are going to have NRA instructors and range safety officers on hand at all times that the range is open or not open, because we're all NRA-certified instructors at the facility. But as far as the ordinance is concerned, it's the first of its kind trying to be implemented into a town, and it's discriminated, it's discriminating against a group of people, which are the gun owners of the town. If this was a pool hall, this wouldn't be a discussion. And I have a law here, it's Rhode Island law that I'd like to read, it's Title V, Chapter 5-2, Section 5-2-5. "Licenses for Shooting Galleries Required. Every person who keeps any pistol gallery, rifle gallery, or other building, or other enclosure in any city or town of this state where firearms are used, without a license from the city council or other licensing authority of the city or the town council of the town shall be fined $200 for their first offense and $500 for each subsequent offense." In the definitions, "licensing authorities" means the Board of Police Commissioners of a city or town where a board has been instituted, the chief of police or superintendent of police of other cities and towns having a regular, organized police force. Our licensing authority is Chief Blakie.
Read the whole statement, don't end halfway through.
And in towns where there is no chief of police or superintendent of police, it means a town clerk who may issue licenses upon the recommendation of the town sergeant, and it also means any other person or body duly authorized by a city or town charter or by state law. And I would suggest then that you read the charter provision that specifically provides that the town council has the initial authority. Even though we can delegate that authority, under our charter, we have the initial responsibility for licensing.
The town council is the licensing agent for the town of Tiverton.
All right, so be that issue. Chief Blakie, Chief Blakie does sign all of our other licenses. Everything that's required for us to operate our business is signed by Chief Blakie. I'm no lawyer, I went online and looked this up. Regardless, what's happening is discriminatory. That's what's going on here. This is a gun issue. That's, deep down, basically, everything is a gun issue, and it's misunderstood what we're trying to do. Whether we're private, a private club, a commercial business, none of that matters. What matters is that us, all of us, as a group of people, as gun owners, are being discriminated against by this ordinance. And I appreciate all the support by the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club coming out, and everybody else that came out. These are all voters back here.
Mr. LeBeau? You know, one thing, this is not discriminatory. This is a business that is coming into town that does not exist. The town has to look at it and see what is in the best interest of all the people of the town of Tiverton.
Would we be talking about it if it was a pool hall?
Yes, yes. It's required.
Okay.
And I would just make the comment that it wouldn't, it is, I mean, we license businesses in the town of Tiverton, and I wouldn't suggest that we're discriminatory to say that restaurants, because they're required to have a restaurant license, or a liquor license, or a private detective's license, or a street opening license, or a hawkers and peddlers, or an antique dealer's license, or the plethora of licenses that this town council issues, we're not discriminating against restaurateurs because we require them to pay a fee and have a license.
But the ordinance goes so much further than a simple license. If you read it, the requirements make it impossible.
I would, I would, I think we disagree on that.
I have just two quick questions. Ms. LeBeau, you mentioned you have other licenses that were signed by Chief Blakie. What were those licenses exactly?
Let's see. Right here, the license to sell firearms at retail, and our federal firearms license. If you want, I can...
So with that said, how is it that Chief Blakie is then signing those licenses?
That's a good question.
I didn't hear what you said. What did you say, Jen?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Blakie? Would you address why a chief would sign those particular licenses?
Yes, well, I believe because the, under the law, the chief is the one, for example, a concealed carry permit is one of the licenses for individuals that the chief deals with, and also on the firearms, most of the places it is the chief on that.
Also the permit to make sales at retail for firearms, as I just gave to the clerk.
I've seen that, and that's the first I've seen that, and I'm not sure that that's actually correct for the chief to be signing that, but...
How does that, how long, how long, how do you not know that? You're the lawyer.
We don't, we don't give...
How do you not know? You're the guy that has to know that.
We don't give sales licenses to businesses in the normal course of events. You have to get particular licenses if you're required, a victling license. We do have tobacco sales, we do have petroleum sales licenses, and so forth. The retail sales, I suspect it's because of the state requirements.
It's because he's the licensing authority for the town.
Well, I'm glad you called this to our attention, we may need to fix that, too.
Okay.
Excuse me.
And with that, we become, we become a government of men, not of laws. Careful, careful. So, so having had... My name is Cynthia Nebregal. I'm a resident of Tiverton. Thank you for listening, ladies and gentlemen, and townspeople. I've looked at that statute, and I think hanging the hat on enacting this ordinance on that statute is an overbroad reading of that statute. I think you are on thin ice, especially, and I would suggest that exempting the Tiverton Rod and Gun makes it then entirely targeted at one man who wants to build something on his property that, under existing law, is perfectly legitimate. Whether we like it in our neighborhood or not, it meets the existing zoning requirements, and no one disputes that. So, it appears that because some are afraid of the nature of this business, that we're going to post hoc enact a law which essentially makes it impossible for this man to run that business. There are remedies at law for that. And to have a law enacted that is targeted at one man and his commercial enterprise to earn a living is wrong. It's just purely wrong, and you should not do it. And I love the Tiverton Rod and Gun, but asking for an exemption is not enough. And my children learned to shoot there, and it's wonderful, and this statute has never been enforced against them. What is an objective judge going to say as to what this town has done to this man and his business and his reputation, and the damage that he has sustained to his property rights, because we have not permitted him to build what is undeniably legal presently? Thank you very, very much.
Good job. Good work.
My name's Carl Hoffman, and I'm a member of the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. I also cut my teeth in the shooting sports and in the outdoors at the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club from a very young age. I'm not here to discuss with you the legal ramifications of this ordinance, but rather one of the many community benefits that our organization has. I'm a Rhode Island Hunter Education Instructor, and I teach the Rhode Island Hunter Safety Course with a team of instructors at the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. This course is free of charge for the students, and the material is paid for under the Pittman-Robertsen Act, which we heard on earlier tonight. The course is supported through the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management by course materials and ammunition for live-fire exercise. The Gun Club graciously provides us the use of the facility and the ranges for us to conduct this class. Since the early 1980s, when our lead instructor first started our partnership with the DEM on this program, over 3,500 students learned hunter ethics, firearm safety, and wilderness skills at the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. Many of the people in the room today are course graduates. Our students range in age from early teens to grandfathers and grandmothers. Our students are middle and high school students, college students, military personnel, working professionals, retirees, and all sorts. I don't know about you, but I certainly feel a lot safer knowing that sportsmen, like the people behind me, have a place to practice and hone their marksmanship skills prior to entering into our fields and our woods within the town of Tiverton. The Hunter Education Program at Tiverton Rod and Gun Club is only one of our examples of educational offerings for the community. We offer this program because we want to encourage the safe use of firearms, both at ranges and in the field. If this ordinance passes, it will effectively shut down our organization. As you can see, it's not just going to affect us, the community itself is going to lose as well. Thank you.
My name's Maureen Morrow, 47, Peaceful Way. I've lived in town for 17 years. I am not a member of the Rod and Gun Club, but I appreciate all their eloquent statements tonight. I do come from a family of hunters. I have many nephews and brothers-in-law that hunt. I have respect for gun ownership. When I first heard of this plan several weeks ago, I had a real, a very visceral reaction to the idea of a shooting range being on Main Road in Tiverton. I wrote to Mr. Roderick at that time, and I realize now, some of the comments I made back then really are more or less irrelevant, because what I've learned since is that the horse is out of the barn. It sounds to me as though one zoning official made a decision that, under commercial indoor use, this sort of operation would be allowed. And it's hard to argue with that. So I'm going to narrow my comments to simply say, I don't think there's a place for this sort of operation on the main road of Tiverton. sort of operation on the main road of Tiverton. I appreciate the Rod and Gun Club's location. I appreciate everything they're doing, and as I said, their comments were wonderful. But for this to be the face of our town of 15,000 people in a day and age where we're waking up every day to hear of another mass shooting, and don't say, "Oh, God." I'm tired, one thing I am tired of is gun, no, please.
Please, have respect for the speaker.
Don't be arrogant. I've never met you, Joe, but you, you seem arrogant. My comment is, what about the rights of the average American? I hear so often the right to bear arms, which is in our Second Amendment. What about the rights of the average person to live in a society that is not awash with guns? So now we might have a gun range on Main Road where people are going to be walking in and out with their guns. And is this what we want? Do we want to be part of that problem? Or do we want to be part of that solution?
Before you speak, again, I want to remind everyone, especially in the back of the room, we can hear you speak, so if you want to have a conversation, please go out in the hallway.
Hi there. My name is Wendy Prezak. I'm a Tiverton resident, a Tiverton small business owner, and a member of Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. To me, Tiverton Rod and Gun Club is a place where my entire family, my mother, my father, my niece, my brothers, my boyfriend and his son, can go to safely enjoy the shooting sports and outdoors and all that Tiverton Rod and Gun, Gun Club has to offer. It has also been a great opportunity to meet and interact with people from all over. I am proud to be part of the safety and educational classes that are offered by Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, and I'm, I am also proud to recommend Tiverton Rod and Gun Club to my customers, my friends, and anyone else who may want to learn about the shooting sports. My favorite part of it all is seeing families come into the organization to learn and then becoming part of our organization. I ask for an exemption from this ordinance so that Tiverton Rod and Gun Club can continue being a safe and educational resource for many years to come. Thanks for your time.
My name is Loian Kimbopino. I'm a recovering attorney. They say attorneys never retire, they just keep trying to recover, so that's me. And I'm here, I am a member, I'm a resident of Little Compton, I'm a member of the Tiverton Rod and Glove Gun Club, but I'm here to talk about the broader issue of constitutional law, which happens to be one of my favorite topics. And I want to take issue with your members that think that you have two constituencies here in this town. You don't have two constituencies, you have one constituency, and that's the citizens of this town. And your duty to them is that they are all, not half of them, all of them, are entitled to your best efforts to make them safe in this town. All of them are also entitled to your best efforts to enforce their constitutional rights and impose as minimum restrictions on their freedoms as possible. I think when you're considering this legislation that you are considering, you really ought to weigh those two obligations. Thank you.
My name is Craig Kaufman. I'm a resident of Tiverton. I'm also a member of Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. This is my son Maxwell, who's also a member of the Rod and Gun Club. And I'll keep it brief. All I wanted to discuss was what the Rod and Gun Club has meant to us. There's not many activities that parents get to do nowadays with their children. I could watch him play soccer, I could watch him play baseball, but I can go up there and shoot trap with him. He is, as Carl mentioned, he is one of the students that have taken hunter education there. He has participated in the youth pheasant hunt here in Tiverton last year. And as such, he's learned responsibility, how to handle a firearm correctly, safety, and has also become part of the community that Tiverton Rod and Gun Club is. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Jennifer Nardone, and I live in that neighborhood. And I'm at that bus stop twice a day, and I bus stops there seven times a day. And I just want people to take that into consideration, that it is a neighborhood and we're on that corner. And I think special consideration is necessary for that location. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Line. I'm a, sorry. My name is David Line. I'm an owner member of the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, and one of the things I wanted to bring to light is the distinction between something like the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club and a commercial facility. John spoke about the four pillars, one of which is accountability, another is safety. And every, most of the people that spoke here for the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club announced themselves as either members or owners. And that speaks to the accountability of, of an entity like the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. We're part of a greater community. We're together to promote shooting sports as well as safe handling and gun safety. Thank you.
I've been a resident of Tiverton for 36 years. I'm not opposed to guns, I'm not, I support the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. I love their location on Fish Road. I am opposed to a business on Main Road in Tiverton. I'd like to point out that we communicate in two ways. We communicate verbally, and we communicate non-verbally. And I'm wondering, what is the non-verbal message to people coming to our town if they haven't seen a shooting gallery on Main Road? This isn't Laredo, Texas. We don't drive around and pick up trucks with rifles in the back, you know? And I think that that needs to be taken into account. I don't think that the message that people would get is the message that we want to send if we're trying to attract businesses to our town. We should also be asking, what sorts of businesses would want to come to Tiverton if there's a shooting gallery on Main Road? I'm not opposed to having a shooting gallery in town. I think there's plenty of other space in town to locate a facility and a business like this. I just don't think it belongs on Main Road. I don't think it sends the kind of message that we would want to send to attract business to our town.
My name is Matt Gravalo. I live here in Hooper Street in Tiverton. I just want to touch upon a few things that Mr. LeBeau was talking about earlier in regards to licensing of the ordinance. I'll start off with Chapter 1147, which is weapons law within Rhode Island. 1147-2 states that the licensing authorities means the board of police commissioners of a city or town where the board has been instituted, the chief of police or superintendent of police, of other cities and towns having a regular organized police force, and in towns where there is no chief of police or superintendent of police. It means that the town clerk may issue licenses upon the recommendation of the town sergeant, and also means any other person or body duly authorized by the city-town charter or by state law. Now, with that said, I just want to go a little bit more in depth with a couple other sections of the Rhode Island general law. So the license that Mr. LeBeau handed Mr. Tites earlier is Chapter 1147-38, which states dealers to be licensed. Says, "No retail dealer shall sell or otherwise transfer or expose for sale or transfer or have in his or her possession with intent to sell or otherwise transfer any pistol, revolver, or other firearm without being licensed, as provided in this chapter." Now, Section 1147-39 states the issuance and conditions of a dealer's license, which states, "The duly constituted licensing authorities of any city or town or political subdivision of this state may grant licenses and forms prescribed by the Attorney General effective for not more than one year from date of issuance permitting the licenses to sell pistols and revolvers." It's quite extensive. I'll give you guys the copy if you want to read the whole thing. But, so under, under this section, it states that the duly constituted licensing authority has the ability to issue a license to sell firearms at retail, which is Chief Blakey, our chief of police within our town. And I just want to touch upon one other thing. The license or permit to carry concealed pistol or revolver within our town. So if Tiverton or any Rhode Island resident wants to inquire about getting a concealed carry permit to carry a firearm concealed issued to them, they, they have two options. They can either inquire at their local police chief, at the local police station, or the Attorney General of our state. So within the law, it states that the licensing authorities of any city or town shall, upon application of any person 21 years of age or older having a bona fide residence or place of business within the town, or of any other person 21 years of age or over having a, excuse me, 21 years of age or over having a bona fide residence within the United States and license or permit to carry pistol or revolver concealed upon his or her person issued by the authorities of any other state. And then it goes into detail about license, how long the license lasts for, et cetera. So we have these processes in town set in place already, that Chief Blakey is the licensing authority for anybody that wants to get a concealed carry permit, and same thing for license to sell firearms at retail. These are processes we already have in place, and it's clearly stated in Rhode Island general law. I don't know why it would have to be looked into any further. So then the Section 1147-54 states, which we've all heard over and over about licensing of shooting galleries, that every person who shall keep any pistol gallery, rifle gallery, or other building or any enclosure in any city or town of this state where firearms are used without a license from the duly constituted licensing authority of the city or town shall, upon conviction, be fined $200 for the first offense, $500 for each subsequent offense, provided that the provisions of this section shall not apply to organizations that receive arms and ammunition from the United States or this state. So like I said, the, the processes, and under Rhode Island general law, it clearly states who the licensing authority is to do anything with weapons. And we already have these processes in place to sell firearms at retail, to get concealed carry permits. I don't understand why the change now, how the licensing authority would get changed.
I appreciate the hard work you put into that, to find that information, but I'm, I'm not an attorney, I don't claim to be one, and I don't play one.
Neither do I.
But I can tell you that those specific chapters talk to individual firearms, the right to carry, the right to sell arms. We're not disputing that.
Right, right.
That, that's not a dispute here. It's the business of a shooting gallery.
Right.
Which we do not have in town.
Correct.
So that is what this ordinance is about. It is not about an individual gun. It's not about, you know, selling a gun and so forth. It is about the business of a shooting gallery, as opposed to a sale.
Correct.
You know, a gun shop, which Mr. LeBeau already has.
Which I'm not disputing the ordinance, I'm just disputing the licensing authority within the ordinance, which states...
Well, our charter gives us the right to be the licensing authority.
Okay. I mean, I just, I read, you know, I'm not a lawyer by any means, I just read into Rhode Island general law, and 1147-54, which states the licensing authority has the ability to license a shooting gallery, and then I looked into the definition section of 1147, which states that the licensing authority is the chief of police.
You have to read our charter.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful, believe me.
By any means, no problem.
But you noticed that the argument that you've made based on statutory interpretation, although we've had four lawyers speak already, none of them have made that argument.
Right.
I, I think that should be a hint to you that you need a course in statutory interpretations.
Possibly. Maybe I know something they don't, you know? You never know.
I'm half kidding, believe me.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
This is the second time that I come here. I am a little upset of all the things that I've heard. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Evangelyn Gendrea, and I live at 14 Springer Avenue. I also want everybody that's in this auditorium that I am the one that abuts Mr. LeBeau's lot that he bought. My back door to the lot is only 20 feet away. I believe that there is a law for so many feet that they have to build. I don't know if that's right or not, but one of you gentlemen or one of your ladies can find out that for me. I don't want to, I don't object him to having a store to sell and buy guns. I just don't want to have the shooting range. I don't think it's an appropriate place. I have also an empty lot on the Main Road, and I would not allow anybody to build something like that. You can put a nightclub there. Would we permit that? No, we would be the first ones to say no. And again, how am I going to sit outside with my family, my grandchildren, when I come to the, my backyard to make a cookout or something, or my kids come from Florida and Maryland? How would any of you like to have that in your backyards? I'm sure that you would not. I hope that you are very intelligent people in here, and that you would consider and think about not having that, that range there. It's not the appropriate place. That's why it took years for the St. Lawrence to sell that property. That lot has been there for over 80 years. I am 75 years old, and I've always lived in this town, so I know what went on. I can remember my dad was a life member, too, at the Rod and Gun Club. My husband was a member of the Rod and Gun Club. My brother-in-law also was. And you know, why didn't they go to the, to the industrial park? That would be the place for them to go. It would be close to the police department, who are going to be using this if he ever opens, if you gentlemen give him the order to open, or the license. I don't think that that's fair. Where are they practicing now? Is it the, is it the round club? Well, if they don't like that, there's one in forever, a very good one. And I hope all of you consider what I just said. You know, we don't have much life. I lost my husband five years ago. I'd like to live the rest of my life in peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn Bouchard, I'm Vangie's daughter, I live 487 Fish Road. We don't begrudge Mr. LeBeau having that type of business. It's the location of the business. I mean, everyone's house in that neighborhood is so close to that lot. I mean, literally, the business would be in their backyard. I know he's going to build a double-wall facility, it's going to be state-of-the-art, but you're going to have to be able to hear something, especially with him, you know, working at so many hours, from early morning till late at night, seven days a week. There's got to be some type of noise factor, even if it's just a little popping noise that they're going to hear all hours of the day and all hours of the night. And, and pollution. I know he's going to have a state-of-the-art, you know, some type of filter system, but my mother's a breast cancer survivor of two years. We don't need any more pollution than we already have. So I'm just asking for you guys to take all that into consideration. And it's basically just the location. I mean, any, I know it's a commercially, a commercial-zoned lot in a residential area, and, you know, if you were putting an ice cream shop in, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. But the type of business it is, and like my mother said, she doesn't begrudge if he wanted to put his gun shop there, it's the range part that's going to, you know, that, I think most people have an issue with. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike J. I am from Westerly, Rhode Island. I'm here as a representative of the Ashaway Gun Club. I'm the steward at Narragansett Gun Club, the past president of the Bradford Sportsman's Club, a life member of the Groton Sportsman's Club. I currently sit on the Board of Rhode Island Trap Shooting, and I also am an affiliate of the Rhode Island Gun Club. I currently sit on the board of Rhode Island trap shooting, and I also am an affiliate of the Rhode Island State Skeet Shooting Association, an NRA instructor, and I'm a benefactor, life member of the National Rifle Association. I've been doing this for 40 years, talking to folks and educating them. That's why I'm here tonight. I have not a lot of concern about your business with commercial entities, but I do have concern about your ordinance with private clubs. Okay? And the reason is, I feel that precedence may be set here. There are people out there that will use the licensing and/or regulation of gun clubs to put them out of business. All right? There is no other gun club that I have ever shot at that has had a license. Gun club, not talking about a range now, or a commercial entity. The gun clubs afford it. I have shot at the Tiverton Club. It's an excellent run club, and I enjoyed myself there very much. The gun clubs afford the towns a place for people to go and shoot. Most gun clubs won't turn away guests. Even if they're not a member, they'll still let them shoot. Okay? Which helps the town by giving these folks a place to shoot, so they're not out in the backyards, gravel banks, and every other place on the planet. I would hope that, and I know that you've modified your ordinance from the one that I have, but I would hope that you would not license a private club for any reason, as far as the shooting goes. Right? Again, I have been to many of them. There's no other club that I have been to that has a license for their shooting. Right? I've been, like I said, doing this about 40 years. I'm a CCW holder in two states, life member and member of many other shooting organizations. And I'd be more than happy to help you if you had any questions, or to ask, or you can ask me, or call me, or you can get my name off the Narragansett Gun Club website, can email me, if there's anything I can do to help you. But again, the reason I'm here is just so, I would not like to see a precedent set. Any questions for me? Thank you very much for hearing me.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, it's okay.
Sorry.
Before we speak, I'm just going, I'm just going to allow the speaking portion to go on for another 10 minutes. You know, it's, I want everybody to get a chance, but we're having basically the same discussion over and over and over again, so. So 10 minutes, and then we will close the public hearing portion.
My name's Robert Mauer. I'm a member of the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club and the vice president. I have a very important job, not a lot of work, but a lot of prestige. Let me first say that my wife is from Texas. And there was a remark made about people from Texas. And I want to stress that Tiverton Rotten Gun Club is about people. We have 952 members. Those members are people of the communities in this area. 70% of them live in Tiverton. I represent the other 30% that don't live in Tiverton. And this is a jewel of an operation, and I hope that you take the motto of doing no harm. We've been in business 81 years. We're a community, we're open to the public, we're there for education, we're there for open space, and we want to continue. Thank you.
Don't mind me, I'm short, so. I don't really have anything prepared, but I'm not going to give you my life story, just giving you a little, a little summary. I lived in Massachusetts for 18 years, and I joined the United States Army. I'm an Afghan war vet and 22-years-old. I'm married, I'm a father. I lived in El Paso, Texas for roughly 40, four years. I'm an avid gun owner, a firearms saint of my life, to hear people, and I'm not making any personal attacks on it. I am really honestly trying to be courteous to others, because I think people say things sometimes, thinking they're meaning well and they're not. To label gun owners as something, I think what we're doing is we're putting an image on firearms that is a negative image. When people say, oh, well, how can we have something like this in a Main Street area? Let me tell you, downtown El Paso, Texas, El Paso, Texas borders Juarez, Mexico, and in 2012, Juarez, Mexico was the deadliest city in North America. El Paso, Texas in 2013, bordering the deadliest city in North America, more than 2,000 murders a year, was the safest city in the United States of America for their size. We have three indoor gun ranges and gun shops in the central El Paso area. And I understand that a place like Texas has a little bit different firearms culture than this area, but to label somebody who's an avid firearms person, chooses to exercise their right to defend themselves, to label somebody as that, as something that's negative, and putting them under, under fire immediately because they're a gun owner is, is, is the wrong image we should be sending to our children. When I was 11-years-old, my father, my grandfather, they're all from this area, I'm an avid duck hunter, absolutely avid duck hunter. And I understand the Second Amendment has, I'll be the first one to admit it, the Second Amendment has zero to do with hunting, has zero to do with actually defending yourself. And I do say this with all due respect, and I don't mean to come across crazy, but the Second Amendment is created to protect the people from the government. That is what the Second Amendment is created for. It's not trying to sound radical, it's not trying to sound anything, but it's the government's job to serve the people and not to rein over them. If, and you know what? I'm not a, I'm not a Tiverton resident, I'm not even a Rhode Island resident. If the people of Rhode Island honestly want this, then they're, they're the voters, and you guys are the people that they've appointed. But I would really, really, really consider what you're doing here. I would honestly really consider what you're doing here. Because I think that people just, that they're not used to firearms, they're not around the firearm community, they, they, it's natural, something that's dangerous to, to have a negative image, but the more you educate yourself on firearms, the more you're going to realize it's not a negative thing. An indoor shooting range is the safest shooting range you can have. It is. And especially to have a place like, I don't even know Mr. LeBeau, I don't know where he is, or isn't here, or anything. For those guys to give training to people that are buying firearms, so they could safely handle them before they even leave the store, that is remarkable. That is absolutely remarkable. To have a place where you can safely discharge a firearm in a city limit, or whatever they have in Rhode Island, so people aren't in harm's way, that, I just, I can't understand why it's even an argument. And I, and I, and I do mean it with a deep respect, I, I, I lived in Texas for a long time, understand the firearms culture is different there.
You have 30 seconds.
Oh, I understand, sir. But I, I just like to close, again, with the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club. My father and I were avid hunters, and that was such a big part of my life, growing up as a young man. It was such a big part of my life. I took hunter education at the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club when I was 11. It teaches you respect for a firearm, and it honestly teaches you respect for life and being a young man and a young woman. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Before you go, we did not catch your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Aaron Reynolds, and I live in Swansea, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name is Paul Wells, 1529 Fish Road. I am the treasurer of the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club, an owner member since 2002, and the financial officer in charge of the renovations that the club has just completed. The club's significant investment in its infrastructure serves to demonstrate the commitment to its members and the community. We are the largest property owner in William Barton Reserve's development. The club's purchase of these properties were deeded restrictions on development in order to afford the fellow property owners a buffer between the club and the development. The cost of doing that is a reoccurring cost based on the annual taxes that we pay. The club's tax bill liability in 2013 was $18,606. Again, demonstrating the club's commitment to the community that we share. The club's dues are based on an annual operating expense, simple calculation of the operating expenses divided by the number of members. Of these expenses that are directly rated to this ordinance is the insurance requirement of $2 million. Currently, the club is insured for $1 million and $2 million aggregate. The cost of the current insurance is $11,108 annually. The $2 million requirement associated with licensing would double the annual insurance costs. If the $2 million, $2 million aggregate was even agreed upon by underwriting, it is not a standard policy, as, nor was the $3 million, that was a flat-out no. Additionally, the requirements to reimburse the town for engineering and professional service is an open-ended requirement that could cost the club tens of thousands of dollars. The additional burdens these costs would directly increase the dues of the organization. These increases would price some of our members out of the state, this, out of the safe and structured shooting environment of the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club. As the members' dues increase, as a result of the ordinance, more and more residents will move to their recreational shooting from the structured environment of the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club to the quarry-type shooting and makeshift ranges on private property. The Tiverton Rotten Gun provides a safe and structured shooting environment that clearly benefits the town of Tiverton. There are approximately 30 sportsman's clubs in Rhode Island that are not required to license. This council may, but is not required to license indoor shooting facilities. If licensing were required, other organizations would already be licensed. The Tiverton Rotten Gun Club is incorporated in Rhode Island, has operated safely for 81 years. We are a 501(c)(7) nonprofit organization. I ask that the council reject licensing, or at the very least exempt lawfully pre-existing shooting ranges from licensing under the ordinance. The Tiverton Rotten Gun Club serves a, served a vital role in the community for 81 years, and we'd like to for another 81. On behalf of all the members of the Tiverton Rotten Gun, I thank the council for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joy Mitchell, and my husband and I, not only do we live in the neighborhood adjacent to this shooting gallery proposal, but we, our property actually abuts the same property. What will come of my home and my neighborhood when my family outgrows the house we currently live in? I cannot help but to be concerned that potential value of my home will be affected by a shooting gallery at the top of the neighborhood. How is this going to affect the future homeowners in the area? I cannot imagine that it will encourage new people to move into the area around this property. My concern is for the safety and long-term well-being of all those living on the surrounding streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. My name is Ken Hoffman, and I've been a member of the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club for over 20 years. My first exposure to the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club was in 1991, when the US Navy transferred me to Newport. As a lifelong shooter, hunter, and fisherman, I was looking for a place to practice the shooting sports. Also at that time, I needed, I needed to find 100 safety costs for my eldest son, Ken. The Rhode Island DEM referred me to Tiverton Rotten Gun Club, where my son, Ken, took the costs. Over the years, both of my sons, Carl, who spoke previously, Ken, my daughter Catherine, and my wife, have all taken the Rhode Island 100 safety costs at the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club. My two sons, Ken and Carl, and myself, also took the archery safety costs at the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club. About 10 years ago, I also became a Rhode Island 100 safety instructor, so I could teach and train the next generation of hunters and sportsmen. I'm also an NRA range safety officer, pistol instructor, metallic cartridges reloading instructor, and we have many instructors at the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club. The Tiverton Rotten Gun Club means a lot to me, my family, and the community. Tiverton Rotten Gun Club has always been a good steward of the, of the land, and promoted firearms and hunting and wildlife conservation. The club has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars and countless hours to improve our facilities and to promote the shooting sports. Please, please, do not do anything that will prevent the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club from continuing its fine tradition of service to the community. I also urge you to reject this ordinance, or at a minimum, to exempt lawful gun clubs. Thank you very much.
My name is John Lavery, from 3 Saxony Avenue here in Tiverton. I've been a, almost a lifelong Tiverton resident. I am a combat veteran of the United States Army. I am a sworn law enforcement officer in the state of Rhode Island. I am an FBI certified firearms instructor, a six-hour firearms instructor, and have received numerous certifications, you know, when it comes dealing with firearms. I'm not here to speak on behalf of any group today, because I support both the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club and Mr. LeBeau's business. Some of the concerns that I heard from the Tiverton residents, I hope that I'll be able to address. First of all, I've been around gun ranges nearly my entire adult life. What Mr. LeBeau is proposing on that property is an indoor firing range with a system that is going to be state-of-the-art, safety-wise. I have shot at the Tiverton Rotten Gun Club. The standards that they impose at the Rotten Gun Club will also be imposed at Mr. LeBeau's shooting range. It is probably the safest, I think the veteran that came up and spoke before me addressed it perfectly. You cannot have a more safe range than an indoor range. Bullets stay indoors. With a double, wide, concrete structure, I cannot imagine that there is going to be any noise whatsoever. When it comes to pollution, the pollution factor is all of the lead will be collected in a recollection, collection system, so that it is super-safe. So I will be available to any of the residents that would like to talk to me about this in the corridor or outside, if they'd like to ask any further concerns. But the last thing I'd like to talk about is Mr. LeBeau himself. I've heard a lot of people mention here today that this business and that business. Let me tell you about Randy and his business. Randy is a lifelong Tiverton resident. He has operated a business in Tiverton for a long time. He's also my friend. He's the one that coached your Little League teams when nobody else wanted to coach them. Randy is the guy that would give the shirt off his back when you needed help. I have taught those firearms classes at Randy's shop currently. I can tell you that he doesn't take any profit from that whatsoever. He teaches that because he cares. He is passionate about his business, and probably not the most eloquent speaker, but let me tell you something, when it comes to passion and it comes to heart, we shouldn't call Mr. LeBeau a business, we should call him Randy. He's a lifelong Tiverton resident, and again, he's a responsible business owner. Thank you.
And this will be the last speaker of the evening.
I return as, there was a comment made that of the four attorneys who had spoken about the statute, that no one had agreed with Mr. LeBeau, who I don't know and have never met before, as to his interpretation. And I just want to make clear that the argument that I made, that it is not- that I made, that it is not at all clear that you have the authority under that statute as a town council to issue a license at all, and particularly if you do it as to one business targeted. But in addition, even though I didn't mention it, I think Mr. LeBeau has a very good point as to who is the licensing authority, and we can, we can school about that, Mr. Lambert. You and I, who have both practiced law for about the same period of time, but I think he do, he does have a straightforward reading of that statute, and there is an argument there. So that's, that's-
Does not have a straightforward reading of either ordinance or the charter.
Well, we'll have to agree to disagree, but I just-
We'll agree to disagree. Thank you.
I, I just wanted you to know that there is an attorney who doesn't see it quite the way you do. Thank you all very much.
Could, could we have a round of applause for that gentleman?
We're going to, are you, are you gonna change tapes now? Okay. We were gonna take a break anyway because we had to change tapes. All right, we will break for, I'm sorry.
You're standing right behind the light. It's very difficult to see.
Oh, see, I didn't know you were in line. All right, quickly, please. I'm sorry. I thought you were just hanging out there.
My name is Debbie Abbott, and I am from Tiverton. I've served the Recreation Commission in this town for over 22 years on the Recreation Commission. I heard passionately two people tonight, and their memories I'll bring home. One, a competitive shooter in the United Arms Services who, that was his competition. That was his life. Another, a healthcare professional who found shooting as his way to relax, unwind, concentrate, and focus. What I have not heard in many of the eloquent speakers tonight is many people who go to private indoor ranges, Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, it is all about recreation. Don't ever forget that. And whatever rules you make tonight, recreation in this town should be a priority. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, I, I want to thank all those who have come and spoken tonight. And believe me, this council does listen, and we will take everything under consideration. We are going to take a 10-minute break.